Yeah.
But it'll always live.
Right.
I know.
So we're always on a hot mic. Alicia, are you are you the? You're you're the scribe for the. Minutes usually, right? I'm just thinking about if. Oh, okay. Well, if we start without Mary, we can we're still, yeah. We'll just do it. They do it through the recording.
Yeah.
I see. Okay, I got you. Yeah.
I could email them too, maybe.
Probably worth it.
An ad. Email.
Might as well since it's seven and then let's wait a minute or two.
Thinking they probably think seven.
We need a beauty.
So you're not. Eleven thirty every time?
Sometimes be eleven thirty midnight because it's one being a month.
They've been very good. Very good about time.
Sure, they have things to do.
For that. Many mail now.
Yeah. All right, well. What do you what do you why don't we start? Because if we're gonna be twenty minutes late, we might as well have started. And if they're gonna come soon, then we won't miss much.
Exactly.
It's. Great. Okay, and are we recording?
Yeah, ours is fine. There's on heat ready.
All right, so we are we on? Are we on? Okay, great. So. I will make a motion to open the meeting. Only one second.
Second.
And then all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. So welcome to the planning board meeting from January eleventh. Twenty twenty-three. And two quick housekeeping items. Notice of fire exits which are on each side of the room. There and then out the main way, which probably everyone came in. And then if you could, please just turn off electronic devices or anything that might be distracting. Okay, so we'll start with a quick attendance. And I note that all five members of the planning board are present. Alicia Moore is on Zoom. And I I think I saw maybe Patrick on as well, which we can note from AKRF. John Coward, Coward Sessions is on. I saw Susan Oakley, yeah, is on. The landscape consultant. We have Brittany Neal O'Neal here with us. And I believe that that is everybody. Okay. We've got two applicants today, but first order of business quickly will be approval of minutes from our last meeting. Which was December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Does anyone have any comments on?
Two minor things. On page five. Item five B, it's just a typo. It should be Rose, not Brad.
You can do it.
Okay. Cool. Everybody got that?
Winning the typo.
Okay, so so let's see if you got the other one.
Okay.
On the last page, I appreciate the vote of confidence, but I was acting chair, not chair. In two places.
Perfect. I had two other additional comments. On page two. Under David. Gussel, if that's how you say it's description. I thought that on the. Fifth bullet. We might add because it's not referenced here in in the in the. Introduction for thousand two Cove Road, that it's in the FEMA. Special flooding hazard area. So I just thought we might add that pool equipment will be located above the BFE, given that the project is in. The FEMA SFAK. And. Similarly, just a little more color on the other, one of the other items that we discussed. On page four. Under Matthew Pops section where there's the note about an oak tree being added on to neighbors property. I I I thought we might add something like. And and open to suggestions here, but that there was discussion about the practicality of that. And so it works exactly like that for folks. We could do it.
Yeah, I think we kind of. Were very happy with that.
And so I didn't want it to seem so written in, you know, like certain.
Said we'd be happy with the donation to the village, right? Just to go.
Tree bank or 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 put the tree on the neighbor's property, but how are we going to maintain it? So I just wanted to give this isn't, we didn't finalize anything for this.
Right.
Should say they planned to put the tree and we were. We had alternate suggestions.
Yep.
But. Any anything works for me that. Frames that up. I think that does it.
Yep, that's better. That's clearer to what actually happened.
Okay. And anyone else for comments?
The minor thing, the new kid on the block here, so I'm not sure. You know, exactly what's on your. Property, I think there was some discussion. About the the soil that's being disturbed. If it's just the soil under the building or if it's a soil that's. Being disrupted by construction equipment, and I think it was left that they were gonna go back and. Review that and confirm it. It was under a thousand square feet.
Yeah, there was. There was definitely a conversation, right? Because the architect said there will be approximately a thousand square feet of disturbance. Mr. Keller said there will be a thousand. Yeah, we went back and forth.
Then there was, there was where do they drive in and and then what counts as disturbance and and needed to be clarified, I think.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we. Maybe we just say. The board requested additional clarification about the amount of disturbance.
Open and unresolved, awaiting more information.
Right, so maybe we just say the board asked for more clarification on the area.
Sure, when it when it comes back to the board, we'll we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so let's make that change.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then. Does anyone want a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
Make the motion.
Okay, we'll check it. Thank you. So Bill. Good. Cindy?
Yes.
Now, Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Now, our first applicant. Is nine twenty-one Soundview Drive. So if we have. Applicants, representatives here, please come up. So as background for anyone who might be. Listening and then we'll turn it over to you guys and hear about what's new because it's been a while. So. This application was last with us in a year ago in January of twenty twenty-two, where it was typed type two for seeker. You guys have been with HCZM. We'll hear about that and discuss it. You're back with us now for continuing the site plan approval and wetland permit. Eventually, this will require. A public hearing because the wetland permit. So at some point, we'll schedule that and it will be in the future. So for. We did get some public comments just about. This, which are in which are going to be in the public record and would. Encourage the applicant to take a look at what those are. But as far as the process and the timing. You know, there will be time to for the public to see these materials. There'll be a time for. For a a public hearing. So. With that background. Maybe we'll hand it over to you to hear what's new.
Great. My name is Jacqueline Tyler with Nexus Creative. I'm the architect for the project, and I also have Alan Peltz here from ALC Engineering. As you stated, we were here a year ago in January. We proceeded to Harbor Coastal in February. There was quite a bit of a delay. They had asked for some additional information and the ground was frozen, so we had to wait for some additional testing to occur. Alan can speak on that briefly. We were there until last month when they did give us the approval. Most of their concern was focused on the drainage requirements for the lot itself. And we also. We addressed the pool. So since you saw this last, the pool has been rotated. From the direction that it originally was, which actually, if I recall correctly, when we appeared in front of you in January, you actually had asked us to look at rotating that pool ninety degrees. So it has been rotated ninety degrees and instead of it being elevated up on the deck platform, it has been brought down to the grade level. So the pool is down, what we would say at the walkout basement level. Down below. It actually, it hasn't changed footprint and size, so it's everything is the same size that it was previously when we were in front of you in January. In regards to timeline, we're we're on that same path. We understand that there's the public hearing that needs to come up. We have received the three memos. We received those. Either this week or in the last week, and we're prepared to answer all of those questions and have the tree replacement plan, landscape plan. All the additional material that you all have asked for with the consultants. We're prepared to have those ready for the February first submission. For the February meeting. So that's kind of our timeline. We're hoping that, yes, we can set the public hearing for the weapons. Hopefully. For that same meeting when we return, if that's something the board is open to. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alan just to speak on the drainage quickly. I think we've settled that out with Harvard Coastal, but happy to answer questions if you guys have on that as well.
My name is Alan Peltz, ALC Engineering. With regard to the drainage. Sort of evolved over time during the time we were. Testing the soils and creating a stronger management plan. Initially, we had a single stormwater. Management facility located in the north of the pool, actually the golden property one. But with the testing of soils that we did, we found that it was. Due to shallow bedrock, it was an issue. And so we had split the system into two. So that was reviewed also by Harbor Coastal's management. And then in the end, we retested soils to the east of the pool. In the area, let's say nearly east of the pool, we found much deeper soil, very good soils. Of course, sand is a long material there. And so we consolidated what was two separate stormwater management, so it's one. And that's what Harbor Coastal. Actually reviewed and approved at its last meeting. And what we have is a drainage system that basically takes all the runoff from the driveway, treats it into. Water quality. Hundred M separator. Prior to the treatment, the. Stormwater management facility, which is. Number twelve chapters, which was proposed. And roof runoff also was conveyed into it as well. So all the new impervious surfaces are being conveyed to it underneath the pool. The pool deck itself, under the boards is the crushed stone, so the runoff that impacts the deck will actually just filter itself. It's essential.
Okay.
So yeah, so we're happy to answer any other questions beyond the memo that the board has. One question that I do have for you is you just you mentioned that there's comments from the public. Are those above and beyond the comments that were issued? The last in red at the last January meeting. So between January and now, there's been new.
Yes, and they're and they're posted. So.
They're both there. The last two. One we got late today.
Yeah. So as we typically do, I think we'll hear from the consultants. I have just one or two quick questions now, and if others have questions for the applicant before we do that, feel free to after me. So. Two are maybe confirmatory. So two, two things that were that I noted. From our consultant reports, and I just want to make sure this is what you were thinking would be provided for the next meeting. Was AKRF. If you noticed, was looking for just like filling out the zoning tables with specific. With specifics of, you know, step back and just numbers and all that. Is that one of the things that you were planning to do? And then the other, are you are you planning to provide a landscape plan as well? Okay. And then the last question I have is, have you confirmed whether there's any Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction here?
Yeah, so that actually, sorry, I meant to mention that. I know that was mentioned in one of the memos. We are above the requirement of ten. Of the elevation ten. So and we're not proposing any work within that within that area.
So that's the only factor that would trigger the Army Corps to get involved?
Yes, yeah, sorry, D E C, correct, D E C, New York State, D E C.
Well, okay. I think Seamus was asking.
But Army Corps is different, so.
We will double check that, but as far as I know, the what that that had all been confirmed, that it was all within your jurisdiction.
Okay. You what? Go ahead, Cindy.
Okay, so so I have AKRF's memo and we'll have them clarify this. I thought you did have to go for a jurisdictional determination with D E C, New York State. So I also have the same question. Seamus didn't. Are we definitely off the radar of the Army Corps?
And.
But we're not off the radar of D E C.
Right, we'll we'll have Beth Evans confirm that. She had.
Because I got the impression it was in process, like they they were reviewing paperwork and they would come up with their determination. And the permit that's required. So I think they have to go into the field, do the jurisdictional determination. So we've got a. We just have to verify that because in such a sensitive area, you know, that. The waterways lead into Long Island Sound and critical environmental areas and on all all the impacts. That you mitigated as much as as needed, but let's just be doubly certain in this area. Let's make sure D E C comes out and does their. Does their determination.
And on and on the Army Corps, we frequently see this, you know, here and previously I've seen it, they've seen ZM, but even like proactively reaching out and having them confirm. Because if you, I mean, you could, you've seen the mappers where this is, it's it's going to not be. Clear, I I think, whether it is or not. So if you reach out to them, that's really helpful.
I thought that was done, but I.
Yeah, and if it is, then great, because we'll just provide so. Okay, other questions for applicants, which we can come back to, we can hear from the consultants. Anything else at the outset from the planning board? Okay, so then, wh- why don't we go through our normal process here? So maybe we'll go Alicia to AKRF first. And if you can just highlight the key parts of your memo or outstanding items or questions you might have for the applicant.
Sure. So one of the the main issues is the issue that just came up now about the wetlands delineation. So the site plans. Do show that the delineation was performed by Evans Associates. But the D E C jurisdictional determination is still required. And although the. The planning board can continue its review without having that determination made. What? Sorry, when we get to approvals. Any approval should be contingent on. On getting the D E C permits. So that was one main thing, just as a. Small thing, I want to confirm the size of the swimming pool. Just the. The new dimensions I have is thirteen by twenty-seven feet.
Yeah, and I know one of the comments is about the rear yard coverage, correct? So we're going to include that on the next session.
Right, okay, that's great. And. Yeah, so the rest of the comments mainly relate to just those technical requirements. For the pool. You know, the. The rear yard coverage not exceeding forty percent and some screening issues. And. Yeah, that's that's largely it.
Okay, thanks. Alicia, do you think the screening? Because I I saw that comment throughout. Do you think the screening is covered by the landscape plan? Is that going to be the same? Or is is it potentially different? Is the screening via? Landscape plantings or otherwise? Up to the applicant?
Yeah, we typically like to screen the the pool slab equipment, I believe, was mentioned specifically, and we typically like to do that with the landscaping on.
Can I just confirm that you're still sticking with a saltwater pool?
Correct.
Okay, because obviously there are concerns about chemicals and and backflow and discharge and saltwater pools require no chemicals, less chemicals, different chemicals?
Lots and different. So yes, Harbor Coastal have requested a a letter that Evans, as well as the consultant, had both submitted. If they were part of our package, we can go ahead.
We got the Beth Evans ones at least. I don't think I saw another one. So, yeah.
We'll submit that as well with our next submission.
Alicia, I think that was it from you. Anyone else from on AKRF items?
No, it's just it's just just me.
Okay. Okay. John Coward, can we go to you next, please?
Hi, good evening. As Ellen mentioned. The stormwater mitigation system has been the two separate, there were two separate systems that were combined. They were relocated just below the pool. East of the pool. It's the the system's designed for a hundred-year storm. And it's the relocation has placed it in an area where the soils are deeper and the slopes are gentler. The system works much better at that location. And we're 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 happy with the. System design and it complies with the regulations. All our additional comments were answered satisfactorily. There were only two remaining comments we had. In our most recent memo, and they had to do with the stormwater piping system. There was one location where. It appeared the pipe was the inverted pipe was above the grade. So we would, Alan would actually have to. Revise the grading. Off the northeast corner of the pool or relocate the pipe. To a location where he had to cover. And our other, our second suggestion was to move the pretreatment device closer to the. Stormwater mitigation system so that. All runoff from impervious surfaces, not just the driveway in the northern portion of the. Of the roof, but the complete. Roof area of the house would be pre-treated prior to entering the stormwater system. And those were our only two remaining comments.
And is the the suggestions on the piping something that you plan to address for the next meeting? Yeah, okay. I I do have a couple of questions here, so. So, John, well, one one is maybe more of an open question to anybody here. So there's a lot of references throughout and and specifically. In the Coward Sessions memo to the wetland being flagged in two thousand and ten. The last time that you guys were here in a year ago, I think we it was. Mentioned that it was reflagged in twenty nineteen. Is there some? Documentation? Is there some way that that can get into the record? Because there's all these references to twenty ten. Now, I don't know what it would. Take if it's a letter from Beth Evans or something.
Sure, I believe she issued us a report again in two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, let's make sure that's part of the record if it's not. And then. John, I was, it was not clear to me whether the. Testing, and I know we've discussed, it it sounds like something was done to move to decide to move to the. Deeper soil, lighter grade. But I think in the memo here, it still. Says that. There was, I'm not sure it was clear whether the deep hole percolation tests have been performed. Have those been performed?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
What what we try to do is keep all our comments within our memo throughout the whole process and just highlight the outstanding issues in bold print.
Gotcha. On on this one, perhaps for next time, if if there's the final memo with updated items. It it might make sense just instead of comment address to clarify that the, you know, tests were performed and. Adequate. And then. I I looked but didn't find the cut fill. Is the cut fill on one of the. Drawings at this point? Do you know what the net is?
Do you have that number, Alan? I remember you you provided the information early on in the review process.
It only did. It's probably been a while still have to.
Put in a memo maybe for the next submission. Yeah, that's helpful because if there was an open item that I couldn't find on the on the updated drawings. Others from planning board have comments on Coward Sessions, now?
Yeah, I also was confused about the deep hole test and percolation test because one paragraph says. The project plans and SWIP don't appear to include it, so but now they're included. Is that that's that's.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
During our first review, there were no deep holes or perk tests. Alan then performed. Deep holes and perk tests. And in other locations. Which. We could, we could, because of the depth of the soil and the slope of the land, we couldn't make the system work. Providing three feet of vertical separation between the bedrock and the bottom of the system, while still keeping the infiltrators. With seventy-five percent of the infiltrator. Within virgin soil. So we ran to a bit of a problem there. Alan then retested below the pool location. Found deep soils on a gentler slope where the system works fine.
Right, and that's not a bedrock air, you know, situation. And so. I remember years ago and. We used to get as part of the record a photograph of of the per- percolation test, deep hole tests. When I don't think we're doing that lately, but I for one would be interested in having that as part of the. Record. I know it's not feasible for you to go out to every site when they're doing the tests, but I think a photographic record of of the test and the results would be helpful. Is that something we can ask for?
We could request that in the future. Yes.
I I kind of like to do that for all applications. From from now on, if the rest of the board agrees that that would be. I I mean, I think that it's happening anyway. It's just a question of somebody taking some photographs. So it looks like there's also. The the stormwater has to also handle runoff from the roadway.
No. It's only handling runoff from the from the site.
Okay, because that was, I guess, on page four. Item three, it says, as proposed, it appears that runoff from the roadway will enter the property and the proposed stormwater system.
Yeah, that was an early comment of ours. Because of the grades of the of the front, on the front yard, we felt that water running along the shoulder of. Of Soundview would enter the property. So Alan has proposed a curb along the frontage to keep the road water in the roadway.
Right, because there's no storm drains in Shore Acres. Is that right? There's no place else for the water to go.
There's a storm drain just on the east side. It's down here, just north of the property.
And so the road runoff will go there?
Distracting a curve along the frontage. We're actually diverting from the street into the.
Okay. It won't be treated or anything else. It's just, yeah.
Also saying, just so you know, I can take a photograph of the deep hole test. And I think I have a scale. I don't know if you'd like to retrieve. Find it. Because it just showed.
That's. Yeah, because I think I think, you know, there seems to be bedrock on the site, so, you know, everybody wants to know whether or not if there's soil too. Okay, thank you. And yeah, John, I agree with Seamus. I. I got confused with when the comments addressed, especially when there were multiple elements to it. I need a little more. I I need a little more information.
Maintaining the history is really helpful. I think there are certain times, like, for example, in this memo, it's it still says something like the. Our office is performing a detailed review of the port, which is not yet completed. There are certain things like that 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 it would probably just be clearer after it and bold to say it's now complete. And then something like, you know, comment address perhaps sometimes. Common address because now the grading is higher, just oh, just a little bit more sometimes so that we can see. But I think this is helpful to have all the history here. That's 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 great.
We'll provide that in the future.
Great, thanks.
Other questions or comments, John? Okay, so that will bring us to Susan, who is on. Welcome, Susan.
Good evening, everyone. Basically, there's just a few points. It was already mentioned that a landscape plan has not been submitted. And I have stressed the need for. Native plant materials and also to. At planting to include trees that will reach. A large size, large stature at their maturity. Just to re. Just to re, um, I believe that seven trees are slated for removal. Um, and some are as large as thirty inches, so you know, in, in, in an attempt to try and reforest that area. Um, and because trees are being removed, a tree preservation plan is required for the site. In addition to the fact that, um, which a tree preservation plan also will show the tree protection for the trees remaining. And I'd like to emphasize also, and it says it in the memo, that across all documents, engineering and, um, landscape and the tree preservation plan, that the tree protection is indicated on all these plans. Since the construction is done at different times, it's important from the very beginning to know that which trees are protected and how.
Great, thank you. And any questions from you guys from the applicant on, on that?
No, I'm just looking. I mean, everything that we've talked about is on our, on our list.
And Susan, do we, do we not yet have the inventory of trees taken down and so where, and so how many and where the replacements are? Or do we know that, that, that the math is correct on replantings, but we just don't have it on the tree preservation plan?
We haven't submitted one yet.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm putting the numbers, we're somewhere around ten trees, um, to get that exact, um, but we're around ten trees. Uh, a number of the trees on the site currently, uh, are in really poor condition. Um, I don't know, we did have some grown shots, I know it was during the winter months, uh, but even in the summer months, the, the trees are in very poor condition in the area that we're taking down. Um, but, but yeah, so we have, we have that slated for the February first, uh, submission. It's the tree, tree protection plan, tree placement plan and landscape plan, um, all addressing the landscape.
Um, I have one comment on that, that part of the tree preservation plan requires that the condition of all the trees, the ones that are to be removed and the ones that are to remain, um, needs to be indicated on the tree preservation plan. So we, you know, if, if trees are suffering or are in good health, that needs to be indicated on the plan.
And feel, feel free to just say you need to look at this and think about it. Do you know whether there's going to be enough room for the plant? Like, i- is it any issues with finding space for the plantings that are going to be needed based on the calculation?
I mean, we have to look at it, um, yeah, we have to look at that. We don't think so, but we have to look at it.
Yes, soil depth is important in a place with a lot of bedrock.
Yep.
Um, does anyone have questions for Susan or other comments on landscape?
Um, I actually, sorry, I have one additional question based on, um, so Susan, based on the condition of the trees, um, how does that play into the replacement?
If you are removing a tree, it factors into the replacement calculation chart.
But no matter the condition?
Yeah, we haven't, um, come up against that question yet, so I, I guess the board can, uh, I can discuss it with the board and we can figure that out.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, thanks, Susan. If, if anyone's good on that topic, um. Okay, so, um, a couple of quick comments from me, uh, other members of the board, feel free to add here. So, um, I, I think I've already said this in as many words, but I would encourage, um, you guys and applicant to read the public comments that we got, those get posted so you can see what people are thinking, um, as we're going to have a public hearing, uh, at some point. Um, I might ask if there's any, anyone here that wants to speak on this, um, very briefly, uh, open to public comment, um, and then we can kind of finish our review for today. Does anyone from the planning board have thoughts or other, anything else on this application at the moment?
I don't at this moment, and certainly if there's somebody here and wants to say something, even though this is not the public.
Of course.
This doesn't qualify as the formal legal public hearing, so.
And I don't even know if there is. Are there, is there anyone here who would like to say something about the application? Okay, just one? Okay. Sure, okay, so come on up and if you could, um, uh, you can give, use the microphone and then you'll be, um, broadcast. Uh, and if you could state your name and your address, and then if we could ask you to just keep it very brief, you know, two or three minutes, uh, your thoughts, um, please, welcome.
My name is David Freeman. I live at, I, I thrive at nine forty-one Soundview Drive, which is adjacent property. We've lived in the village for fifteen years and before that, uh, worked for twenty-five years and uh, my day job is, I'm an environmental lawyer. So, um, thank you, by the way, uh, Mr. O'Rourke for clarifying the procedural status of this meeting, um. I think it was not clear to, to at least me that this was here, uh, meeting that didn't require public notice. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, a couple of quick things. Number one, uh, one would not review, one can't review the materials that were submitted and get the sense that this application is at all controversial, but, but we, I, we respectfully submit that it is. Uh, there's very little mention in any of the materials that you're actually in a critical environmental area. This is being treated by everybody, or at least most of the people that, whose documents we reviewed as a common garden variety um, application for, but you in a critical environmental area, it's been recognized by Westchester by the state. It's the largest saltwater, freshwater combined wetlands in, in the entire area. It's under hundreds of species, some of which are, um, threatened, including the osprey and bald eagle. Uh, it is really a jewel and it needs to be protected. Um, and it's clear that, you know, the applicant should be entitled to build something, but it should be something that is sensitive to how sensitive this area is. It protects the environment, protects the, the, uh, the plants and the animals, uh, the view shed, uh, and, uh, and otherwise preserves what, what we have in this conspiracy, which is very rare and, and, and valuable. Uh, I mentioned also the fact, uh, and I, I noticed that, that the applicant would like you to have a public hearing right away, but it's clear from uh, your own consultants that there are items missing from this application. Members of the public have really not had much of a chance to review any of these materials, which were available on village website only as of Monday and they're complicated. It's hard to get through. And I think you want informed comment, uh, I think we're entitled to have a chance to look at this stuff, study it. Uh, hire our own consultant if we feel obligated. To do that, we need sufficient time. DEC hasn't made a jurisdictional determination by experience that is not slimmed up. I also raised the question, which is really not in your jurisdiction, but, um, it's, it's troubling to us that there was an entire process before the Harvard Coastal Management Commission with absolutely no public involvement at all. There was no notice, the public involvement. They made a consistency determination. I, I think it's worth having someone, maybe the village attorney, look at whether a determination made under those circumstances is really a valid determination. And if it isn't, then you don't have a consistency determination that you can permit you to go forward. In any event, uh, thank you so much for your time. We'll obviously be submitting other comments and, uh, we hope that this process can result in uh, if there is something, build something that is consistent with the area, which is the, to be located.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Yeah, okay, um, and, and only one thing that I think I'll address there is that it's true that a lot of documents get posted here. Uh, many of them were available back a year ago in January and then you build on that record. So the more recent submissions, I think are, you know, manageable and it comes step by step. But that's, so that's kind of how it works from our perspective. We, we didn't review all of this over the last couple of days. We've had some, a year ago, we've had some time and then, um, you know, it gets added to it.
Um, well, and can I just clarify from my own understanding? We're talking about the applicant coming back to our first meeting in February and we would then schedule a public hearing for the wetlands permit at that meeting, which takes several weeks of notice requirement. Uh, it doesn't happen then. I, I can't imagine we would have a public hearing until March.
There's still information coming in from the applicant.
Which we'll have for our next meeting, right?
February, and then, and then we'll schedule at some point in the future.
Maybe early March, I would assume.
What is, is thirty days now?
Yeah. Uh, not, not to send out the mailings, but we have to schedule a month out.
Right, right. I think.
But it's not thirty days that they get notified in advance. I have to check the wetlands, but it's either fifteen, definitely not ten.
But functionally, what will happen is I believe that if at a meeting we vote to schedule a public hearing, it will not be our next meeting, which is two weeks away. It'll be probably the other one, if not, if not one more.
Yeah.
Minimally at March. And so I think that what is before us now, and I don't think there's anything else, but that anyone, if they want to add anything to, is just how we're going to close this meeting on this application. So I think the request was to provide more information and have a meeting scheduled for that same meeting. I think my view would be some of, some of these items, particularly a landscape plan to not have at all an inventory on the trees, might just be inefficient to schedule a hearing, receive those documents and then decide that the plant, that it's going to get re, um, redesigned for some reason, and then the public hearing is really, uh, the way I would like the public hearing to work is really the best and kind of final proposal that the applicant can put forward for us, that people can comment on, so. Um, so I think we could schedule a public hearing today that we would set for some point in the future, or we could say we don't, we're not prepared to schedule that yet because we want to see the next wave of documentation, most of which we've spoken through, I think in, you know, very specific terms and it sounds like we're going to get exactly what we expect to get.
I don't really want to proceed without DEC's input on the jurisdictional determination. I think I mean, I've seen them come through fairly quickly and I, I wouldn't expect there are any surprises on it. But again, I, I think we have questions about the delineation of the wetlands and I think we need DEC. Otherwise, we're just wasting everybody's time and I would never want to put it in a, as a condition in a resolution, because we all know resolutions don't get looked at um, after they're filed. It, it just doesn't happen. It, it's nobody's fault. It's just the way things go. So that's my take on, on waiting, not that I want to drag it out, but we need that information.
Let's, let's, let's leave the scheduling, we'll, we'll schedule discussion for February and then the meeting March, whenever, you know. By then, by then. You mean they'll come back and, and they'll be on our agenda? Right, and, and, and DEC should have responded by then.
Yep.
Okay. Showed it on a more complete package.
Where did we leave it with the Army Corps of Engineers?
That's on the, I think that's on, that's on the list of things that we would expect to get at the next time. I, I don't think that's going to impact, but yeah, it's good to check.
Right, Jacklin, just so you know, if you try to make it for the eighth meeting, you'd have to submit by January twenty-fifth. But if you're talking about the twenty-second, then it would be February eighth, not first. Just give a little more time.
January twenty-fifth.
January twenty-fifth would be for the eighth and February eighth would be for the twenty-second meeting. That would be when those items would be due. Um, and the public agenda is posted the Friday before the meeting, so it's open to the public and viewable by Friday at five, five, five P M.
Yeah, and I mean, I would just say that we do welcome, um, any comments from the neighbors. Um, we are trying our best to keep this as far away from the wetlands as possible. Um, I feel like we've demonstrated that in all the submissions that we've made. Um, so if there's any specific idea that the neighbors have, feel free to, you know, submit the comments or reach out to me as well.
Okay.
I think also it's helpful. A lot of the stuff that they also submitted to Harbor Coastal is valid on Novus too. You know, I can move it over to this meeting, but it is a lengthy reports to add, so it is on all the meetings that they've been in the last year through Harbor Coastal. So those are open to the public and they do, like Seamus said, carryover. So it's a bulk of, you go to the last Harbor Coastal meeting, you'll see everything that they've submitted up until this point.
That, I think that's important, Brittany, so that's.
Yeah.
If the public wants to access, they go back to the prior meeting and then they can access what was available, because it, it, you know, the materials built.
It built, so whatever you go to the last should have everything that has been submitted over the entire course of the project, some of which doesn't make it to the planning board because it's kind of separate issues that don't come up and they were addressed. Whether we continue to do that later, we may, but.
Yeah, I.
We might have to move it forward on to that.
Yeah, I'd rather err on the side of caution. I know it's a pain, but I think we need everything.
Yeah.
Because we, we, we really have to see everything, just as Harbor Coastal does.
Right.
It, it, it's, it's just not a complete package. And so, uh, I didn't really realize I needed to go to Harbor Coastal to get doc, I mean, I thought the document.
We just have the resolutions, yeah, yeah.
We've submitted, um, in this mission, we've submitted all relevant documents. So anything that was submitted to Harbor Coastal that was current and relevant, we did include in the package except for, apparently that one letter didn't make it in from the consultant. Um, anything that was outdated, um, such as, you know, old drainage or anything like that, we did not include, um, but.
And, and that was very helpful. The Beth Evans memos were helpful because you could see by the conclusion what the discussion had been, so thanks for submitting.
So, so if there's any, you know, I'll, I'll go back and check it. It sounds like the only thing that we didn't get to was the consultant letter, which we'll be sure to get in.
Okay, so, um, for the record and for attendance, um, our attorney Mary is here now, so, um, Mary, hello. Um, but unless anyone from the planning board has anything else, I think that we will just move to the next applicant here and, um.
I had this one kind of technical question and, you know, I'm with Mr. Freeman kind of coming at the end. Maybe this has been addressed and maybe it's in the pool consultant memo. But, um, I've just been thinking about this pool and one of the public comments that raises is to, it's, is at somewhat the lowest elevation of the, the new development and with, and I understand it's a saltwater pool, which has, uh, different chemicals. Not my area of expertise certainly, but in the event of like flooding, strong water runoff, hitting, you know, the pool possibly, I don't know where the filtration equipment is either, but the filtration equipment and so forth. Um, it would seem that there would be risk of that getting into the watershed is.
Um, I believe that was addressed in Beth Evans' memo, um, but I will, I'll confirm that. Um, that was one of the concerns of Harbor Coastal as well. Um, the pool has been the main factor of this entire application, to be honest. Uh, that was a bulk of our time with Harbor Coastal. Originally, we had the pool up higher, um, and the concern with Harbor Coastal was the fact that if there was ever a catastrophic, catastrophic storm, um, and the pool were to collapse, then you would have a greater chance of there being, um, water filtrating down the hill and into the, um, wetlands, which is why we actually brought it down to the ground level so that you didn't have a chance of it dropping down. Uh, theoretically, at that point, it's now in the ground itself, um, so you wouldn't have it rolling down the, the tree.
So, yeah, so I guess my, my real question though is, do we have expertise that, that makes us comfortable with, with that? Would suffice to see the full consultant's memo or, um, I, I'm not sure who reviews that or are we, are we comfortable with it, I guess, is my question.
Well, um, we'll, we'll each have to decide, um, we should see the pool consultant, um, the Beth Evans, um, uh, memo takes a very extreme approach and actually comments on the materiality of the pool actually come all twelve thousand gallons or whatever it is going into Otter Creek. So that, that's what I think we currently have to assess. But it, it's probably helpful for you to hear us speak about the things that we're thinking about.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then I don't think we need to do anything formal with the end of this application because we're just going to move on and.
We're not yet.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Ooh, without further ado, if everyone's ready, we'll go on to thirteen and ten flagler.
The person, the planning board, we are, uh, for the record, uh, Simo Town, the director of the law, one of the theater for David and Bonnie Winston, who are the property owners of the applicants in this application. Excuse me, I'm David, who seems here tonight along with Robert Keller, the project architect, uh, Lewis Fuestle, the landscape architect, and Michael Stein, he's an engineer. Uh, we were last for you in September for a site plan and wetlands permit and have been to Harbor Coastal since then. Um, in December,
The Harbor Coastal Commission issued a conditional consistency approval. For the project and uh the project did have some modifications as a result of the H C Z M C process that I'll go through a little bit. Um, since then, we have received the D E C permit, so I I did submit it yesterday, uh, because it did just come in and I have copies.
We we did receive it, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I I brought copies for everyone. Thank you, you needed it. Um, so so let me just recap a little bit of where we're at, the modifications that we need through the process. Um, and then the the next steps going forward. Uh, the property is in the Edgewater Point community. It's located um partially within the the V E flood zone and partially within the uh. The C H A as well, which was solar version hazard area. Um, there are no D E C. Um, regulated wetlands or buffers on the property, so the state D E C here only had permit authority for C H A. Just the that coastal erosion hazard area. Um. The project is proposing to uh demolish the existing one-story home and construct a new. Uh, single-family home within approximately the same location. Um, the project's also proposing to remove a lot of existing residential improvements that are impervious. Basketball, patios, that sort of thing. Um, so really, all of this is going to result in a significant decrease um in impervious coverage, not just on the property as a whole, also within C H A, within the V E flood zone. And within that one hundred foot village regulated button buffer. Um, since we were before Harbor Coastal. We ended up making some modifications to the pool as a result of those conversations. So initially, we were planning to keep the existing pool where it is. And that is partially within the C H A. It's also a very, very big pool. Um, we're proposing now to remove that entirely from the C H A. And to replace it with a smaller pool that's outside of that hazard area. Um, as a result, that removes everything from the C H A except for. Um, a portion of the existing sea wall, so the hundred and forty nine square feet of coverage that remains in the C H A is for a sea wall that the applicants are not proposing to modify. Uh, and that D E C permit I mentioned earlier that you received yesterday, that is for the C H A modifications. Um, now what that permit does not reflect is the amendments to the pool. So Beth Evans, who's the wetlands consultant on the project, is working with D E C. To further amend it to allow us to remove the pool. Um, and we would expect to have that amendment uh from D E C very soon. Obviously, we we got the C H A permit for removing less. Uh, they're they're going to presumably not have an issue with removing almost everything from the C H A, but that's a that's a technicality that we know we we need to update. Um, so that's that's one outstanding thing for the record. And just to summarize, you know, we're keeping total impervious coverage on the property. Um, down to thirty percent or it's about fifty seventy percent now. Um, additionally, we're by removing the pool, we're able to. Increase the landscape plantings um and the the previous area that we're proposing, and I'm going to let Louis just kind of summarize that for you because I think it's it's important for the project to know. Uh, one other thing that happened during the the H C Z M C process was an in-depth review of the structure of that that's proposed. Flood vents, compliance with FEMA and the village flood regulations. There was a bathroom previously posed um at ground level. It is. Has been fact removed. Uh, so right now, everything below at or below base flood elevation is uh just storage space or garage, which is permitted for FEMA and with the village. There's no habitable space. Everything is two feet above the base flood elevation. Um, so we we did receive the comments from your consultants, who I know you'll hear from shortly. Uh, I will just let you know that. Since we received them, almost everything has been responded to, so we will be providing you with. Uh, landscaping plan that breaks out that tree plan. There's no new information. It's it it's just something um. That was requested, we're more than happy to provide. Uh, I don't believe colored sessions had any comments. A K R F had some cleanup of minor inconsistencies. Those were all filed uh today by Robert Keller's office and. We do have an updated uh zoning compliance chart that shows the existing conditions, which was requested that we will also file with you. But again, there's no uh new information aside from the D E C permit amendment. That I believe we were required to provide. Um, so I know that we do need a public hearing uh for this matter, and I believe, Brittany, that's like a fifteen day notice, so um. You know, the applicant would request that that would be scheduled for the for the first meeting in February. Um, and in the meantime, within the next week, we'll provide all of the cleaned up materials, so to speak. I don't know if you want to come up and just give a brief overview of um. Of of coverage calculations and then also, you know, if the board members have any questions, we're we're having.
I had one just real quick question. You mentioned early on that you were removing a one-story house or replacing with a one-story house. It kind of looks like a two-story.
Yeah, I I believe I meant a single-family home, so.
Oh, okay.
It's being replaced with two stories.
Okay.
Uh, I use who's still. Um, as um. That had mentioned, we were requested to separate on our original planting plan. It is a combined tree preservation and planting plan. And in the spoken, it was in open and we now have two separate plans. We have to prepare to have it here. On the plan, though, in addition to, um, we are showing the new trees as well as the trees uh that uh we have a total of six trees. In the six to twelve inch caliber that are being removed, which requires six new. Uh, and we are we are proposing a total of twenty one deciduous and twenty four. Uh, new every tree, so total forty five new trees to be added, so. And as Kristen had mentioned also, we have quite an extensive, we have, we're proposing a over eight thousand seven hundred square feet of mitigation plantings. Uh, shrubs, uh perennials, really naturalized all native plants throughout the property. Um, we have, as Kristen mentioned, also through the process with the change of the pool. Uh, we were able to make some changes also to the driveway from the original plan that was submitted to you. I don't know if you want to bring up the plan, but yeah, it we've um. Uh, the driveway was decreased also in order to get down to even a thirty percent coverage from the the original coverage. So originally, we were um. We had a fifteen thousand seven hundred square feet in a wetland area. Um, and the power proposed now is down to seven thousand eight hundred. Um, you know, the total coverage on the lot went from nineteen thousand to ten thousand. Um, this plan is uh. In the planting panel. See that? I think this is, yeah, here, you can see how the green spaces now, all of that, um, seen pictures of the site before. Wasn't existing basketball, tennis court, the patios and all. The original pool extended up beyond to the C H A. And we went back and forth with the whole idea of taking it out and it just seemed to make the most sense in the long run with the amount of disturbance. That was being taken to take all the hard state out around it. Uh, and how to do the pool, and this just was a better pool situation for the. Client, we're able to move things from the way from the the world as well. We have read the original plan, we had showed you had a new driveway in the front that came through to more of the entry, which uh by eliminating that short end drive. There was a do see when there were the hearts given that area. Um, so I think you you could see we've uh, you know, we've reached out out to Susan and went through. Uh, she was concerned that um. Everything on this one plan is a bit too complicated, so we have two separate plans now. That plan is prepared, that will be submitted. It'll have the details that she requested also. Um. If there's any questions about it, uh.
Um, thank you.
I actually have a few questions about the pool. Um, when I looked back at the previous building inspector's determination of. The the steps you had to take for this application. There was no mention of the pool, and I know A K R F usually gives us an analysis of the pool going through the. Village code requirements for the pool, such as a fence. Um, screening of the um. External pool equipment, and I don't know if that's folded into all these additional trees, if some of those are going near the.
Yes, um, I I can walk you through it. The fencing. Comes off, if you see where the cars on the garage, fencing comes off that point of the uh driveway, behind the driveway, comes to the property line. Um, runs back out. To the sea wall, the sea wall accesses the forfeit change of uh elevation there. The same on the opposite side of the house, it runs to the property line and runs back to the property line to meet the. The four-foot uh state requirements. The pool equipment is screened heavily with plantings. That's just above the driveway, that. Little box area that you're seeing there. And again, screen, there are also some landscape walls that sort of separate. Um, between the house and the equipment. We have pretty extensive screening on the property lines on both sides of the property that, you know, protect and the view from neighbors in. But at a high, at a level that is not infringing on either of the neighbors' views of the water as well. So we're trying to be as sensitive as possible.
So. The the house is serving as part of the pool fence, okay. The village doesn't seem to have any code restrictions about that, but does the state in terms of automatically closing doors and things like that? From a house to a pool area for safety?
There are requirements on, uh, there's a combination with, um, there will be an automatic cover on the pool. And usually with the automatic coverage changed back and forth and uh. But generally, if you have the automatic cover, uh, you do not need the alarms on every door going out. Um, I I can check John. Keller may know if that's changed again, it's come back and forth somewhere, but we will, you know, force it, but we need any of that requirement.
It's out of our jurisdiction, but I was just wondering in terms of, since there's, looks like there are probably some sliding glass doors and, you know, to.
Doors that will create the exposure.
Okay, um, but I think we probably need the analysis from A K R F and I didn't see any detail as to what the fence was. Made out of, I mean, usually there's some information about that, so. Uh, and I think the reason it was overlooked is because in the initial determination, there was no conversation about a pool. Even though we all know there's a pool in this application.
Right, well, I I think there was a little bit because the house was proposed to be removed and replaced, but the pool was going to stay, right? So if the house was was partially acting as um. As the security, I believe it was looked at, again, this is back in September, so.
Okay, but we usually, you know, we need A K R F.
And then I I agree with you completely. I mean, Alicia, you would normally do for a pool, you know, the the table, which hopefully we can do with this application.
Right, yeah, that's that's no problem. We can prepare that.
Great, thank you so much. Okay. Um, I I'm ready to go through our consultants. Anyone else before we do so up here? Okay, um, Alicia, maybe we'll just go uh right back to you, um.
Okay, so it it's a similar issue with uh with the last one and the D E C permit and. Kristen, thank you so much for clarifying that you guys have received that permit. I understand that it needs to be amended to reflect the. The amendments to the pool. And other than that, yeah, our questions were, you know, technical things that look like they've they've been addressed. So. Yeah, we will prepare the pool analysis. And other than that, I think we're set.
Only the only comment I had is on your element, uh, other than what we already discussed on adding some pool discussion is, um. Um. Really, Kristen, to the applicant, that if you saw the memo, there's a zoning table, which it would be helpful to just be complete for us.
Right, so we we have completed that uh over the last few days.
Thank, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. John?
As the applicant's professionals discussed. The impervious surface. Uh, on site is being reduced from approximately nineteen thousand seven hundred square feet down to ten thousand three hundred and seventy square feet. That results uh. With the stone water treatment systems, uh, the rain garden in the rear, the infiltration system in the front. There results in a reduction of the peak discharge from the site. Uh, to seventy one percent. Of the present. Uh, a significant reduction. Uh, also, the floodplain volume on site will be increased. By about seventeen percent, all positive factors with the with the site. Um. And the bathroom, the one finished portion of the house, which was below the base flood elevation, has been removed from from the application. So, uh, as the applicant's professional stated, the only. The only improvements below the uh base flood elevation is the garage. Storage areas and the entrance to the house, which is all permitted under FEMA.
Yeah, John, do you mind if we ask about that? Because we have gotten some uh comments on that as well, which I'm sure are the record here. Um, so the. The um base flood elevation is maybe fourteen and the garage is twelve feet, is that right?
Yes.
And so what, uh, between the village and um other. You know, FEMA, I guess, what whatever the jurisdictions are, wh-what is allowed to be below base flood elevation?
Uh, parking. Uh, storage. And entry to the structure.
It must seem habitable, okay. Okay.
And that's all that's proposed with this application.
So that's that's clear to me. I mean, I think you received a comment that's just.
From that, I guess I've I found myself getting. You kind of confused about these these comments and so forth. When I when I look at their plans, it looks like. There's a. You know, the base storage or elevation is like, I think, eleven feet, and then the first habitable floor looks to be, I think it was twenty feet. Um, and and when I looked at 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 your comments, John, it says here, the applicant submitted a flood plan, da, 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 da. And the garage slab is twelve feet and the finished floor is seventeen feet. And and then it says that also it goes on to say that, um. In the next paragraph, that. The lowest onsite elevation between nine and ten, highest ground elevations between twelve and thirteen. But then then we got comments, you know, written in from. This this other fellow here who who talks about the. Uh. The site going from fourteen to seventeen feet and the garage should be at fourteen feet and. I mean, and and but the garage is at twelve feet. I mean, it seems to be a lot of inconsistency about these levels, um.
Yeah, well, John, let's like help us with that, but but I I think we can be clear. We we asked specifically, the garage is at twelve feet and is that permitted? And I think the answer is clearly, clearly, yes.
Well, except on the plan, it looks like it's at eleven feet.
Which plan is that?
Which?
What do you? Let's say.
The architectural guy?
Yeah, the architectural.
Do you know what sheet number?
No. It's an A. Yeah, I know, I know, they all, I know they all say A on them, but uh. Being architectural, but um, yeah, I don't remember. It would be uh the elevation. Okay, thank you.
I think simply that letter uh has some confusion about.
Yeah.
Using the base flood elevation and. You know, design flood elevation.
Yeah.
That information.
That that was my thinking, but I thought it would be useful to have it all clarified here. So for the record, what are the levels?
Um, the garage level on our plans, I believe, are at eleven, and the first living level is at twenty.
Yeah, that's that's what I thought, okay. So all this twelve feet and fourteen feet and and all, it's 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 all. And and the seventeen foot finish floor, that's twenty feet, so yeah, so.
Always been that way.
Yeah, okay, so I I just wanted to kind of get that clarified because it runs through John's memo and this this other person, I think, taking off of that road in and and so. So you think it just to get it clarified for record.
Well, just just to clarify, the the base flood elevation. Is fourteen feet. At the house site. It is seventeen feet. In an area between the house site and the sea wall. So that's where the the base flood elevations are. The 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 elevation actually changes on the site. It's seventeen feet. Uh, closer to the Long Island Sound, it's fourteen feet at the house, and it actually reduces the thirteen feet out by the road. So as you get further away from the sound, the base flood elevation is reduced, you know. In elevation.
So those are base flood.
Right.
And that's, that's established by FEMA.
Sure.
Established elevations by them.
Thank you.
There were other, there were other comments regarding the, the. The actual design of the structure itself. And how it would be built to comply with the FEMA regulations. And the village of floodplain administrator is the building inspector. And he does that review when he reviews the plans for the project.
She now.
She.
She.
Oh, she, I'm sorry.
Frank has become.
To be clear, the, the breakaway walls, start going to be working on that, I, I would really discuss that at the board here, we discussed that twice at postal. Yeah, it will be breakaway walls and rest be.
Yeah, no, I, I think I understand, I mostly just wanted to get it clarified because there seem to be inconsistencies here and there.
And that's actually really helpful to hear, so there will be breakaway walls. And, uh, just block us very quickly, especially for people maybe paying attention at home, um, what's the. Uh, sequence, you're here talking about, you know, site plan and wetland permit, and then before you would get a building permit, you would. Um, confirm that you have all the FEMA related construction, yeah, okay. Great, thank you. Is, d- does anyone have to cut Phil for this project handy or the net?
Yeah, there is a. The flood volume, I, I think that's really what the question is, so that increases overall for all the different elevations within the flood zone. From seventy one thousand five hundred forty two cubic feet, that's between elevation nine to thirteen. And that increases by about twelve thousand to eighty three, seven fifty two. It's random flood storage analysis, strong as you can bring.
Okay, yeah, I saw those, thanks, that's good, thank you. Okay, uh, anything else before we go to?
Well, let me just ask the question then about, um, the other comment that came in talking about, um, pervious. Concrete and things like that, um. If, if the app, sorry, sorry about that, um. You know, the, the, the suggestion was that every, all, all of the hard surfaces should be pervious and.
That there's no reason for it, well, we, we have a decrease of almost fifty percent in impervious area from nineteen thousand down to ten thousand. Uh, in addition to that, we're taking all the runoff of treating it either for water quality or we're, and releasing it through a rain garden. Or we're doing infiltration practice, we're, we're fully infiltrating all the runoff coming from the driveway. So there was, whereas currently you have nineteen thousand square feet untreated, discharging it out, releasing it directly to the set.
So, so just to, so I understand what these pervious surfaces. If, if you were to swap out what you're planning to use with a pervious surface, would there be any dramatic reduction?
No, it, it basically is, the house is, is impervious, there's nothing we can change there, pool surface and footprint, that's impervious. It really is that therefore left to the driveway, the driveway area. So that's the only thing that would be able to change, but again, we're taking all the water already and a hundred percent infiltrating it.
So there's no reason to, there's no reason to do, but I wasn't even sure how, how effective pervious surfaces. Would be like, if you had to rely on that, I, I always understood that they really weren't that terrific when you're using. They, they don't really, um, convey that much water, it wouldn't help you if you.
They do, it, it really would act the same way as infiltration system under, underneath the.
Okay, so it is effective, it's just not necessary.
And it requires, that requires maintenance the same way as the, the coltech requires a maintenance, so that has to be basically vacuum swept. Uh, like, did a machine come in and they vacuum it, so any, any solids or sediment get in and block the pores, you want to. That all has to be removed.
So your treatment system is much more effective in terms of, of cleaning the water, okay. Thank you.
What we're including is, um, specifically for the driveway, we have isolation rows. Where we can actually go, where the, any water that goes in that has sulfur sediment, it goes into one of these isolation rows. Isolation row is basically a row of the Coltechs that has a fabric underneath. So if anything is deposited, like a back truck can come in, jet it all out and remove it quite simply compared to. More efficiently than backing out off the pavement.
Got it, thank you. I just have a question, maybe, um. I'm not sure who could answer, but is there a rule about the ratio of pervious to impervious when you're creating new construction? Yeah, what, and what is that ratio, what's the suggestion?
In this district, which the home previously was not complying with, which now.
Right, okay.
Thirty five, right, yeah, that's.
So they were out of compliance with the basketball court and everything, and now with your plan, they'll be in compliance, okay.
John, I don't know whether we. Uh, covered everything, I, I, we have from my notes, but maybe we stopped you and.
Yeah, no, I, I have no further comments, I think all our comments were addressed, uh, by the applicant.
Okay, um, why don't we go to us to Susan, please?
The plant list, the proposed plant list has now been updated to replace. Uh, one invasive species and, um, highly commendable, the whole plant list for this location that is. Um, heavily landscaped, um, is all native. We've discussed that a tree preservation is required, um, the points of that. Uh, I discussed with Paul from. Husko's Landscape Architecture Firm, um. There, uh, all the plans, engineering site plan and, um. The landscape plan all correspond regarding which trees are to be removed. Um, my one concern was. A mature twenty-two inch tree that is shown to be partially within the limits of disturbance. Um, it can be viewed, I, I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with this, it can be viewed on Hudson Engineering's, uh, sheet C two. Um, and you can see it's in very close proximity to the north end of the. Residents and it would be very difficult not to disturb the tree root system. Um, with construction in its current location, um, just, uh, to give it an overview. Where the, uh, raised. Air conditioning equipment and generator are, the, the edge of those is the line of disturbance. On the engineering plan and it would. It would be difficult to be able to dig over there without disrupting the tree roots. So. There are anti guidelines when you do need to sever. Roots, so I'm happy to pass those, um, guidelines along. Um, but I did want to make the planning board aware that the, about a quarter of the tree's roots, if not more. Could be affected and, and in, in a place where there's wind flooding and coastal conditions. That could compromise the integrity of the, and health of this tree.
So, um, well, first, do, do you guys have any reaction to that?
Yeah, I agree totally, Susan, uh, the comment, the existing residents, a good portion of that is already in that location. So, uh, which isn't shown as an oval in here, so about, I would say almost a third of those. Where those, uh, the drip line of those roots is already in the structure of the existing. Um, but we can definitely, there are methods, as Susan mentioned, uh, there's root spading, air spading. That can be done, invigoration to that tree, which we can include onto our, onto our planting. Uh, we have also based from your notes, we included, um, on the tree preservation thing, our planting plan will include. The, uh, the drip line indication that is shown on, on the engineering. So it's consistent on.
Yeah, it's in, because the landscape plan usually doesn't show up until the project is at completion. Um, it's really important to have those guidelines, um, as early in the process. That, that, that's possible.
Great, if you want to forward, uh, what you're proposing and we have certain ones that have been used in the past, but.
No problem.
Thank you.
Am I right to understand, is the forty-five new trees, those are new tree plantings?
Yes.
So, and that, that would be far in excess of any requirements, okay, yeah, that's. Okay, any, any questions for Susan or Susan, is there anything else, uh, that you didn't cover?
No, that, that's about it.
Okay. So, um, I, I suppose I'll ask, is, is anyone from the public here to comment on this application? I don't see anybody. Okay, um, I, I think, I think, thank you, maybe we'll chat about what's next here, but.
Um, if I, if I could just ask one question, uh, on behalf of the applicants. In the past, the planning board has preferred applicants to go to VAR to get some initial, uh, input before we have final site plan. And in this case, the, um, architect project did request that and. VAR, I guess, had said no until we have final approval, so I just want to make sure to have that conversation so we're all on the same page. As to process, um, should we just hold off until, uh, the planning board's final action before we go to VAR, even for an initial presentation?
We really haven't been having two meetings for applicants, it's usually one meeting, so it's kind of a bit of a waste for a lot, you know.
That's great.
I was the chair of the BAR a couple of weeks ago. And, and, yeah, I mean, we are willing to review drawings early on, as, as I think. Tom probably knows with the caveat, though, that. And it, other people, other jurisdictions have reviews it and, and if they review it and something changes, you have to come back. You have to go through the process again, so I don't think we particularly mind and we're willing to do that. And, and, yeah, and, and we've done that and, and people do that to get a preliminary read. And, and I think also it tends to engage the, the neighborhood more because they're kind of more aware of the, uh. Architectural review than, than perhaps some of the others, so. You get that feedback and, and I can see, but anyway, yeah, it's doable.
Well, congratulations on your new appointment.
Well, thanks.
And, uh, well, we'll take that for a comment, that's fine.
And, and I actually did have one other comment that I'll just mention, uh, if you look at the short environmental assessment form. I believe no is marked to this being in a CH, uh, CEHA and no to encroaching in the wetland. Which, um, you know, it's just easier and the, it's, it's better process period and then it can avoid some public comment. I mean, if, you know, just generally, we can take, to look at those carefully so that, you know, there's nothing that's just blatantly, I, I think.
On the EAF or the CA?
EAF. Yeah, there's a short environmental assessment form that was, I think, yeah, so. Might, might re-submit it, cause it's clearly, you know, um. Correct, um, okay. So maybe we'll, as a planning board, we should discuss the next step, um. Often, you know, I think this is a different application, uh, than the prior, um, there are a few follow-up items that we've laid out, but. I think it was fair how they were characterized, but it's not really new information, it's a little bit more detail in most cases, um. So, um, maybe we can discuss whether we would schedule a public hearing for this application. Um, or whether people are not prepared to do so.
Does it seem that there's anything material that is open? I mean, there were clearly material things open in the last application, I'm trying to, nothing off the top of my head seems material, but I.
But we're, we're presuming the DEC will be happier with the plan. You know, as it's amended, so if.
That's true, there is a new D E C.
Yeah, but it's, it's going to be a more conservative plan than what was already approved, so I.
It's, it's more, it's more work in the CEHA, but I think it's all good to get more impervious out of it, or.
It would think they would be happier with that, um, that and then, yeah, the other stuff.
I mean.
Can you get the other stuff, and, and we still need AKRF to do the pool analysis, which again is not. I don't think that's going to be a major impact, um, can you get the landscaping in in time for our second January meeting?
I could, but I don't believe the notice period is long enough, I think it's fifteen days.
But then we could schedule the hearing that day.
Sure, yeah, we can do that, I mean, the only thing I would ask is that every time the. Here in the meetings, it's, you know, significant expense to them, so if we could schedule it tonight, um, the caveat that everything has to be in. Before the twenty-fifth, uh, that would still be two weeks prior to the February meeting.
But they still mean you attending on the twentieth, so that doesn't bypass that, so.
Let's discuss that, let's discuss that, so here, I think we have, we, we, we know what the planting is, you know, we, um. Are going to get some sort of check the box info, um, info that we already have, you know, we're going to confirm that the pool. Uh, fits, we're going to get, hopefully get this amendment confirmation from DEC, um. There's really very little, I think the biggest risk is that something comes in that we're not satisfied with and we either postpone. Cancel or do a second hearing, but I just think that that's very unlikely, so I, I would be comfortable scheduling a public hearing. And taking this info in, but we, you know, we have to discuss.
You can have a hearing and not vote the same night.
The public hearing?
Yeah.
Right, so.
Absolutely, we've done that.
If it doesn't suffice.
Cause my, my thought and, and then, and then everyone should, should weigh in on this is that the most efficient thing for the applicant here is that I think we have a pretty good picture of this. So I, I'd, I'd like to, for their benefit, do a, a, a meeting that's coming up with a public hearing. And then we'll have to see, I mean, it's up, up to the applicant to make sure that what they provide is consistent with what we expect and then we'll hear from the public and then we'll take it from there.
February eighth meeting is enough time to do the notices and everything, so we could do the public hearing on the eighth, assuming we get everything ahead of time and obviously reviewed and looked at by them.
And as a counterpoint to our earlier application, here, it's very fair, the public has what they need at this point, really, I mean, we'll get these confirmatory extra documentation, but. You know, I think.
Yeah, the chances of someone having a problem with a particular tree in a particular location is slim to none, so, um, yeah, okay. I'm good.
Okay.
I think we'd be on wetlands. Issues.
The, the public hearing is triggered, the need for the public hearing is triggered by the wetland permit, right, yeah.
That's the only reason we do it.
Yeah. You know, things like zoning and all.
Yep, yeah, but again, I mean, to reach this point, I mean, we'll have a public hearing, we can hold it open. It doesn't mean that we're voting, would it, it's just trying to be set an efficient timeline for the applicant, in my opinion.
And we might actually hold it open if we don't have the final, um, permit from DEC, we would, maybe.
Yes.
You know.
Yep.
So that would be a reason to hold it open, but if we're just waiting for paperwork.
Yeah.
We can get the rest of it done.
Yep. Okay, so, um, does anyone want to motion to schedule a public hearing? And Brittany, so it's going to be for February eighth, is that right? And Mary, help us if there's anything procedurally here, so.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, okay, so we'll vote, um, Bill?
Sure.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mallory?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Yeah, thank you, everybody, uh, and that, I believe, is it? So I will, uh, motion to close the meeting. Okay, Bill, in favor?
Hi.
Absolutely. Okay. Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.